All right, well, we'll go ahead and call this meeting of the Camrio Sanitary District Board of Directors for its Wednesday, March 10, 2021, regular meeting to order. Madam Clerk, may I have, may I have you call the roll, please?
Director Craven?
Here.
Director Kildie?
Here.
Director Moshe?
Present.
Secretary Santangelo?
Here.
Chair Tremblay?
Here. Would you please join me in our flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, I do not see any public comments for this section, for this, for the, for the CSD meeting. Do you have any public comments?
No comments.
All right, let's move to item three, which is the consent calendar.
Move the approval.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Craven and a second by Councilmember Santangelo. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Kildie?
Yes.
Director Moshe?
Yes.
Secretary Santangelo?
Yes.
Chair Tremblay?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we recess under item four A to reconvene later, let me ask if there are any comments from sanitary district staff?
No comments.
Are there any comments from board members? I actually have two, if I might. The first one is that my understanding is that the State Water Resources Control Board earlier this month, or perhaps it was late last month, re-released an informal staff draft of a revised general order for sanitary sewer systems to the public for review. Basically, it's the sanitary, the general order for sanitary sewer systems, waste discharge requirements, and that would be applicable on a wide, on a statewide basis. And this deals with sanitary sewer overflows, SSOs, and SSMPs, sewer system management plans, and so on. And apparently, my understanding is it was a very significant departure from what was anticipated in terms of its requirements on permities. So I would ask, as long as my board members, fellow board members are okay with this, I would ask that perhaps we could have staff report back to us at the next meeting on their understanding on this item. I see Mrs. Craven nodding her head. I'm trying to see if I can see everybody on the screen here. Ah, okay, now I can see everybody, sorry. And then the second thing, if I could, is also ask staff, since we're on the subject of regulatory activity, if there's support from my colleagues on this, could we ask staff, Mr. Klotzel and Ms. McGovern, to schedule an agenda item to, where we could basically have a regulatory update on the status of our permits, NPDS permit and other permitting matters that are of interest to the sanitary district? Is there, okay, is everyone okay with, with asking, with doing that? All right, I'll ask, thank you, I see there's assent on that, so I will ask for that at, at a future meeting. Okay, with that, I'm going to go ahead then and recess because item four A, the standby power matter will be jointly taken up by the city council together with the sanitary district board. So the sanitary district board will now stand in recess.
With that, I'll call the Camrio Successor Agency to order and ask if there are any amendments to the agenda.
No amendment.
I don't see any public comments, I see no hands up. But is there any member of the public who would like to speak to the Camrio Successor Agency on an item that is on or not on the agenda? Seeing no hands, we will move on to the consent calendar.
Move the approval of consent.
I'll second.
Motion is second to approve the consent calendar of the Camrio Successor Agency. Could we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Kildie?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moshe?
Yes.
Mayor Craven?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously. Okay, are there any comments from staff?
No comment.
Comments from board members? If not, this meeting is adjourned. And at the same time, I will call this meeting of the Camrio City Council to order and ask the record to reflect that all council members are present. Are there any amendments to this agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I would like, with approval, I'd like to pull, uh, pull item H from the consent calendar. I can either ask my question to Mr. Klotzel at this point, or maybe we can bring it up at a more appropriate time in the agenda.
If you have several questions, why don't we expect that there will be quite a bit of discussion or some discussion? Why don't we pull it and put it as the third item under Public Works? So that would be item C under Public Works.
Thank you.
Okay, any other requests for changes to the consent calendar? Or any other part of the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I, I just, I, I have a question about the minutes. It's probably a quick fix.
Sure.
Item one, I think that's, it's supposed to say that the goals and objectives are going to be presented for adoption on March 24th?
What page are you on?
Um.
Page one, number one, the minutes, third paragraph? Well, at that time, we were scheduling to bring them on the 24th, but we did delay. That's right, this is the minutes of the February 3rd meeting.
Never mind, sorry.
Any other questions or changes to the agenda? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item H, which has been moved to Public Works?
So moved.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Tremblay is second by Mr. Kildie to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item H. Could we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Kildie?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moshe?
Yes.
Mayor Craven?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously. Okay, Mr. Tremblay, would you like to call CAMSAM back to order?
Yes, well, record will reflect that we are reconvening the sanitary district board of directors meeting.
And jointly, we will look at the Public Works, item 3A, standby power at city and sanitary district facilities, CH 5067 agreement and agreement amendments. Could we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, the city council. Our senior civil engineer, Andrew Grubb, is managing this project, and he'll be giving the presentation tonight.
Thank you, Dave. Right, good evening, Mayor Craven and council members. Staff is here to provide an update on the standby power project at city and Camrio sanitary district facilities. Joining me today is Ryan Glanville from Tesla to answer any questions specific to the Tesla agreement, which we will cover in tonight's presentation. Starting with some background on the project. In January 2018, council approved an agreement with JMPE to design diesel generators at city hall and courtyard. The following year in June, council requested that staff study the feasibility of using solar and battery storage for standby power. In February 2020, council approved an agreement with Clean Coalition to assess five sites, city hall, courtyard, police station, library, and the wastewater treatment plant. On October 28th, 2020, staff presented four alternatives to council, and council directed staff to move forward with the design of the recommended hybrid microgrid alternative as shown here. This hybrid system would use a combination of solar, battery storage, and diesel generators. During an outage, the solar and battery storage would be used first, and once depleted, the diesel generators would turn on to provide power during a long-term outage. As you can see here, staff did not propose to install a generator at the library and would instead rely on solar and battery storage to cover short-term outages. Staff will incorporate the existing diesel generators at the police station and wastewater treatment plant. And finally, the study concluded that it would not be cost-effective at this time to install additional solar and add battery storage at the courtyard. Staff was also directed to pursue grant funding for the project and proceed to finalize design of the diesel generators at city hall and the courtyard. Since then, staff has negotiated a proposal with Clean Coalition to provide 30% design of the hybrid microgrid. In December, submitted three applications to the Federal Emergency Management Agency Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant, otherwise referred to as the FEMA BRIC program. Identified grant funding through the California Public Utilities Commission, Equity Resiliency Self-Generation Incentive Program, otherwise referred to as S-GIP, through Tesla for battery storage at the wastewater treatment plant, and negotiated proposal with JMPE to complete design of the diesel generators. So with approval of tonight's recommended actions, staff will continue moving forward with 30% hybrid microgrid design, finalize design of the diesel generators with JMPE, and enter into an agreement with Tesla to design and install battery storage at the wastewater treatment plant. Staff anticipates receiving the results of the FEMA BRIC grant towards the middle of this year and completing the 30% microgrid design towards the end of the year, at which time, staff will return to the board to decide how best to proceed with each site, whether that is a power purchase agreement, or PPA, or a city, district-owned model. With the power purchase agreement, staff would return to council to amend the agreement with Clean Coalition to develop a request for proposals. The city would then receive proposals from third-party PPA providers who would cover the upfront costs to design and install the microgrid. The city would then pay the provider for energy use through a PPA rate. It's expected that this rate would result in a net savings of this, to the city over the term of the agreement. With the city and district-owned option, part of this decision will be dependent on whether the city receives grant funding and any grant requirements associated. If the city receives funding through the FEMA BRIC program, staff would return to council with an agreement with Clean Coalition to finalize design and go through the environmental process following our standard design bid build process to construct the project. The alternative, again depending on the funding source, is that the city would issue a request for proposals to design and install the project. The primary difference here between this and the PPA method is who pays for and owns the system, and therefore directly benefits from the energy savings and incentives. Again, with that city-owned model, the city would directly benefit, but cover the upfront costs. In the PPA model, the third party would own, pay for and pass the savings through that PPA rate, and they would take on that financial risk. So during the feasibility study, it was found that a PPA model would yield the highest savings to the city due to the incentives available only to private third parties. In parallel, JMPE will finalize design of the diesel generators at city hall and courtyard. Staff did include the cost of the diesel generators in the FEMA BRIC grant application. So depending on the outcome, staff would either finalize the design and package this with the microgrid project if the city receives the grant. Otherwise, staff would return to council to advertise bids for the generators and pay for construction using local funds. Also in parallel, Tesla will submit a S-GIP grant application to pay for the design and installation of battery storage at the wastewater treatment plant through a no-fee agreement, which we will go into more detail later in the presentation. So before we move on to get into a little more specifics, are there any questions to this, at this point?
Any questions?
I, I have a question. Am I free to speak?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah, um. Do we have any examples of how the battery-operated wastewater treatment plants have, have worked? I, I know this is somewhat cutting-edge here. And I, i-is there any examples of other plants that have implemented this that we're, you know, talking about here that you're aware of, Andrew?
Yeah, it is something we've looked into. And I just want to stress that the battery will be used as the primary source, but once that battery is depleted, then we would still have those generators to supply backup power. So it's really a cost-savings measure at this point to reduce that peak shaving. It, it would charge up during the low usage, low peak time, and discharge during that peak time, and, and then also be used during an outage until the generators kick on it. And at that point, the generators would supply power after the battery is depleted, so.
Okay, so the generators will be powered by diesel, is that correct?
The generators would be powered by diesel. Those are existing at the treatment plant, and those would supply power during those long-term outages.
Okay, but most, for the most part, they'll be generated by battery, and the diesel would be somewhat of a back out in case we have a backup, excuse me, in case we have a, a long-term power outage.
Correct.
All right, that's all I have for right now.
Okay.
So as Mr. Kildie asked it, will be under the batteries all the time except when we're under the, the diesel backups, and that would be in an emergency. There will be not a time when we're using electricity as we are now? That's not, that's not supplied by the battery?
Um, that, we will still be tied to the grid with the battery through this Tesla agreement. It's not until we add solar power where that, that solar panel would generate the power. It would charge the battery if the battery needs to be recharged and supply the plant's power. So with this battery option right now, until we add solar later, we'll be using that, charging up that battery again during those off-peak times, and then discharging it to save us from having to pull power from the grid during the peak times. So it'll constantly be charging and discharging.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, I have one more question if I might.
Sorry, Mr. K.
Um, how long is the battery supposed to last? And from my understanding, that Tesla will take care of all the maintenance and I, and, and replacement of it, up to 10 years. But after that, how long will the battery last? Or are we going to be on the hook for purchasing a new battery at whatever cost the new battery will be?
Oh, we, we could, that, that battery, the warranty is for 10 years. It's expected that it would last a little bit longer than that. We'd get some usage, maybe up to 15 or even 20 years. But you're right, that, that battery life, the, the storage and capacity would eventually decrease. At the end of the 10 years or 15 years, at the end of its useful life, we would need to pay for transporting those batteries to the Tesla factory where they would recycle them, and then decide at that point, do we want to purchase more batteries that are, as a replacement at that point? Is it cost-effective? But again, we'd still have those diesel generators as backup. So it could be a decision, a decision point at that, that time, 10 years from now or 15 years from now.
It's probably really difficult to forecast the cost of a battery 10 years from now.
That's correct, we don't know what kind of technology will be available then, or if, you know, we hope that batteries will continue to get cheaper.
Thank you.
Mr. Tremblay?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Andrew, this is a great slide because it just kind of sort of puts all together in one, our, our whole decision tree. But can I ask, I, I would like to ask you just a couple of questions on this. So assuming that we move forward tonight, at the end of 30% design completion, my understanding is staff will then return to us, and you'll make a recommendation as to whether we go the PPA route or the C slash CSD-owned direction, correct?
That's correct, and, and that'll depend on what kind of grant funding we, we have at that time. We should find out about the middle of this year whether we get FEMA BRIC grant funding. And that would be a city-owned model. We're also pursuing other grant funding. That could either be a third party or, or the city would own it. But we'll make the recommendation at that time.
Would it be correct to think that grant funding would ordinarily not be available to the city if the city went in the power purchase agreement? If it went down that road?
That's correct, depending on the grant source. Again, if we went with a PPA, most grants such as FEMA BRIC would want you to own it and operate it in order to be eligible for, for that grant.
But could there be a circumstance where a third party would be able to secure a rebate or grant on their own, and, and the city would see an indirect benefit in the PPA agreement?
That's correct, yeah, that third party could qualify for S-GIP or other tax incentives. Again, that, that wouldn't be available to us as a government agency. And then the idea would be they'd pass the savings on to us through that PPA rate.
So going back to the 30% design completion, seems to me we've, we've taken one incremental step so far, and what staff is asking us to do is to get to the 30% design completion, and then we're, and then council will be asked to make some fundamental policy decisions at that point, right?
That's correct.
Is there any, Madam Mayor, one more question. Is there any circumstance that you can envision where you would not be able to come back to the council after a 30% design completion? With those, and ask the council to make those basic policy decisions? In other words, if I'm voting on this tonight, I, I personally would like to know that we'll be in a position to make the fundamental decision which roads we're going down, you know, at the end of the 30% design completion stage?
Yes, that's, that's correct. We will be returning at some point with all of the sites to make that decision.
Maybe another way to frame it, Andrew, is, is at the end of that 30%, when we get to 30% on design completion, that's enough information in total for the council to be, for, for staff to make a recommendation for the council to make a decision, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Um, since it was brought up, I don't know that you'd covered this, but Mr. Kildie mentioned that at the end of, it says, Tesla will responsibly recycle the batteries at no cost whenever their useful life is over to CSD, except for shipping of the batteries to Tesla Gigafactory in Sparks, Nevada. I looked and looked in the contract, and so before the end of the presentation, I'd like somebody to address where in any of these agreements it says that.
Sure, and, and maybe I can ask Ryan to address that when we get to that point further in the presentation.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions before I move on here?
Could I ask the mayor to, to restate her question so I can be looking for that?
Oh, sorry, yes, on big page four, the 1, 2, 3, fourth paragraph, fifth paragraph, toward the end, it says, based on the Southern California Edison account structure for... No, that's the wrong place, the fourth paragraph. Um, I just wrote my notes in the wrong paragraph. It says, "The operations and maintenance costs will be built into the annual CSD operating budget at that time. When the batteries reach the end of their useful life, Tesla will responsibly recycle the batteries at no cost to CSD except for the shipping of the batteries to the Tesla Gigafactory in Sparks, Nevada." And I couldn't find that in any of the included papers. And I'm not saying it's not there, I just couldn't find it. So I was wondering where it said that.
I'll, I'll look for it.
Mayor Craven? The, Dave Klotzel here.
Yes.
I believe Andrew was referring to Ryan Glanville from Tesla, who will be available tonight for Tesla-related questions, and he would probably be most familiar with the agreement. While, while Brian Pierre, our attorney, is free to look at that, I, I believe that's what Andrew, and Andrew, you can confirm that for me, was referring to.
Well, that's fine, I just, before we finish the discussion, I'd like somebody just to tell me where it is.
Of course, I just wanted to clarify that, what was being meant.
Okay, thanks, I don't think there are any other questions.
Okay. Great, thank you.
So I think, go ahead and.
Okay. So first, starting with city hall and courtyard. So with the approval of tonight's recommended actions, Clean Coalition will complete the 30% design of the hybrid microgrid, and JMPE will finalize design of the diesel generators. In, in December, staff submitted a combined FEMA BRIC grant requesting $2.6 million with an $875,000 required local match for final design and construction of solar, battery storage, and diesel generators at both sites. The state, through the California Office of Emergency Services, is responsible for the first level of review and only selects projects that will be most competitive nationwide. The state reviewed the application and selected it for submittal to FEMA review. Staff anticipates receiving the results later this summer. Since this grant is highly competitive, staff is concurrently pursuing other grant funding opportunities through S-GIP and the Clean Power Alliance as backup in case we are not successful. Moving on to the police station and library. In December, staff submitted a FEMA BRIC grant for both, both sites. Unfortunately, this application was not selected by the state to move on to FEMA. The FEMA BRIC grant is weighted heavily towards the benefit-cost ratio, and since there was an existing diesel generator that supplies power to the police station, staff could not show a significant benefit, significant reduction of service during a power outage, and therefore, the benefit to adding solar and battery was not there. With the approval of tonight's recommended action, Clean Coalition will complete the 30% design of the microgrid, incorporating the existing diesel generator at the police station. A diesel generator was not recommended for installation at the library. Instead, again, only using solar and battery for those short-term outages. In the meantime, staff will continue to pursue other grant funding sources for construction and return to council later this year to receive direction on how best to move forward. Finally, at the wastewater treatment plant. In December, staff submitted a FEMA BRIC grant for the wastewater treatment plant. However, this application was not selected by the state to move on to FEMA for review. Here again, the existing diesel generators and the fact that this plant is in a prone flood, an area flood, excuse me, an area prone to flooding were both reasons that it was not moved on to FEMA for review. Since then, Tesla has contacted the district regarding a $0 agreement to install battery storage through the S-GIP Equity Resiliency Funding Program. Staff reviewed their experience with similar agencies and found that Tesla is qualified to provide battery design and installation services at the wastewater treatment plant. Tesla will apply for the S-GIP and receive the grant funding directly, which will cover the cost of design installation as well as operation and maintenance of the battery storage for 10 years. After 10 years, the district will be responsible for any further operating and maintenance costs. And at the end of its useful life, the district will be responsible for delivering the batteries to Tesla's Gigafactory in Nevada for recycling. And at the end of its useful life, the district will be responsible for delivering the batteries to Tesla's Gigafactory in Nevada for recycling. And I did hear from Ryan that that will be added to the agreement. So with tonight's authorization, that will authorize the city and district manager to enter any kind of extra agreements. So we'll make sure to add that to the agreement language, Mayor Craven. What's unique about this agreement versus a PPA is that the district will own the system from day one and benefit from any energy savings produced by charging the battery during off-peak hours and discharging it during peak times. The district will receive additional savings by tying it to the grid and allowing the grid to pull energy from the battery during regional peak demand. The software will continuously monitor the battery level and the forecasted weather to store up enough energy anticipation in anticipation of a storm event that may lead to a power outage. Just recently in January, the plant experienced a power outage that lasted sixteen hours. These batteries will provide critical power supply during short-term outages. And once depleted, the diesel generators will turn on to supply power for the remainder of longer-term outages. With approval of tonight's recommended action, staff will enter an agreement with Tesla to apply for the S chip funding to design and install the batteries and enter agreement with Clean Coalition to coordinate that design with the hybrid microgrid, again, adding that solar component. Since it was found that the existing diesel generators at the wastewater treatment plant are ending near the, the end of their useful life, generator replacement costs are proposed in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five to the next capital improvement program. In the meantime, staff will continue to pursue grant funding for installing solar and for the replacement of the diesel generators. So this slide shows the estimated cost through preliminary design for the Clean Coalition and JMPE amendments as well as other anticipated design services such as project management, environmental review, and grant funding support. These will be awarded either under a future item or through our existing on-call agreements. Tonight's action results in a total estimated expenditure of five hundred eighty-one thousand minus the available budget of one hundred ninety-six thousand, resulting in an additional three hundred eighty-five thousand twenty dollars required appropriation. The cost to finalize a request for proposals or proceed with final design are not included in this total authorization and would be appropriated when staff returns later this year for direction on how best to proceed with the project. So tonight, staff is requesting that the board and council authorize the required appropriation for design of the project, authorize the city manager to execute agreements with both Clean Coalition and JMPE, and authorize the city manager to execute agreements for installation of battery storage at the wastewater treatment plant. So with that, it concludes tonight's presentation.
Are there any questions?
I have a question, Your Honor, if I may. Yeah, can you, well, first of all, who do we get the permit for the diesel generation, generator from? Who is the permitting agency on that?
That's the Ventura County Air Quality Control Board.
Okay, and if I'm, if I'm reading this right, so Tesla will install, design, and operate and maintain the battery storage for ten years at no cost to the district? Am I reading that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so kind of an interesting business plan there, but I'll leave that as it may right now. Um, so with the design and build, do you have an estimate about how long? Let's just say in a perfect world, that, you know, we're ready to go with this. How long are we talking about start to finish before this comes online?
And Councilmember Kildee, you're talking about the wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, I'm talking the wastewater treatment plant right now.
Yeah, we anticipate early next year when that's, that's going to be installed. So tonight's action will start design on that, and it'll take about a little less than a year to get those installed.
Okay, and then the diesel generator is at the end of its life expectancy. And it's in the CAPS program, I believe you said two thousand and twenty-four? Is that right?
That's right. That's correct.
Okay, so if that's the case, and if we're going to go battery, wouldn't we want to move up that CAPS program to an earlier year? Because if, in fact, there is an outage with the battery and the backup is going to be diesel. And if the diesel somehow, you know, has a problem here, we're not looking real good. So has there been any discussion on that, on those two items?
Yeah, and I just want to add that those diesel generators have low hours on them. They're just nearing their end, the end of their useful life. So we're anticipating that replacement in about three to four years from now, but they still have some life in them.
Okay, so you feel that the integrity of the diesel generators are viable at least up to, let's say, two thousand and twenty-four, when potentially replacement may happen?
Yes, that's correct. They're regularly maintained once a year. They start them up every month for testing, run them for an hour. And so we feel comfortable that they'll last another three to four years.
Okay, now, as far as the battery goes on the wastewater treatment, will Tesla be readily available if we do have a problem with one of the batteries? Or is it a phone call and they have to come down and it takes some time? Or does it automatically, if there is a problem, it automatically kicks into diesel?
Maybe I can have Ryan address that question. Ryan?
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, Madam Mayor and council members, it's my pleasure to join you this evening and happy to answer all your questions. Very excited to be talking with you. Yeah, I guess, if we just repeat that question real quick.
Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so my question is that, let's say the battery fails. What is the timeline? Does it automatically kick into diesel? Or do we have to have, you know, experienced personnel come down and check it out and see? And in other words, I'm just curious as to how that's going to work if, in fact, we do have an outage.
Great question. So we install our batteries upstream from the generators. So if there's ever a utility outage, the batteries actually kick on within two hundred milliseconds of detecting that outage. You'll, you'll go right to being powered by the batteries automatically. That will last for approximately an eleven-hour duration under average circumstances. If at any point, let's say, the battery fully discharges, or if there's, in the very unlikely event that something goes wrong with the battery, you would just go back to your current situation of your diesel generators. They're completely separate from that.
So that kicks in automatically then?
Correct. Everything is controlled autonomously. It's a one-megawatt, four hundred, or sorry, four thousand kilowatt-hour battery. It's a very large battery. It is entirely controlled autonomously by Tesla software. And to, to your point, if there were ever any issue with the battery, we actually have a network operation center in California. We do have, in your area, we actually have service installation and technician crews. And we would, we would honestly know about any issue before you would. It would actually appear as a red blinking light. We have a wall of, of computer monitors at our network, network operation center. So we would know if there were ever any issue. But the vast majority of the time, you know, this technology, Tesla, we've been deploying it for about ten years now. So this is the cutting edge, but it is out there. Other water districts have it in place, other industrial sites, even Southern California Edison themselves, utilities use these batteries. So they're, not only are they very safe, but they're very reliable. They're, they make up over about eighty percent of all industrial batteries in California. And the, from our experience, the vast majority of, if there's ever any issue with the battery, it's something that can be solved remotely via a software or firmware update.
One other, just follow up quickly. Can we expect a ten-year life out of these batteries?
Absolutely. So first and foremost, the state pays for ten years of operation and maintenance. It's, it's part of the program. So you will get that ten years of operation and maintenance from Tesla. In addition to that, there's a manufacturer's warranty that covers the battery energy storage system for a fifteen-year period. And the unique thing about our offering is that actually, Camaria would own the asset from day one. It will be yours. So if, let's say, in year seventeen, for every reason, it stops working, as Andrew mentioned, you can simply recycle it with Tesla. We have no recycling fee. You just simply pay to have it shipped to our Gigafactory in Sparks, Nevada. And this battery, just to make it very clear, just by charging up overnight when energy charges are low and then discharging during your peak demand events and during your high time-of-use energy events, it's going to save you over ninety thousand dollars per year. And if you would be interested after ten years in extending your maintenance, you can purchase an extended maintenance agreement from Tesla, and that would only be about, in today's dollars, only four or five thousand dollars per year. So, you know, you would, at that time, make the assessment if you're interested in paying four thousand or five thousand dollars for operation maintenance of a battery that's going to return to you about ninety thousand dollars plus per year in electricity bill savings.
Thank you. That's all I have at this.
I'd like to tag on to Mr. Kildee's first question. Your answer applied to a time during a period when we had no electricity, when we do have, during a power outage. When we don't have a power outage, if the battery failed, we just go right on into the power grid as we right now are doing. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? See no hands, so I have quite a few. Um. So you have said Sparks, Nevada, and the Gigafactory, and, um, you said that that isn't in the contract, but it would be added. Is that correct?
So that's actually, it's in our owner's manual, and we actually mentioned in our agreement that we will be delivering you our owner's manual. So it is, it's there. There is some proprietary and confidential information in our owner's manual. So we typically don't send that until after the agreement, including a standard non-disclosure agreement is signed. But, you know, we'll be happy to call that out explicitly.
So what I'm interested in, I mean, we know that Tesla moved from California to Nevada. Who knows where they're going to be in ten years or maybe fifteen years, maybe over in China. So how much does it cost to recycle one of these batteries responsibly? And how much does it cost to ship them?
So believe it or not.
I guess is my question.
So believe it or not, it's the, it's very similar technology to, you know, within our laptops and phones, lithium-ion batteries. There actually is a market where you could actually make potentially a profit recycling it at the end of its life. Tesla, we're interested in it, because even after twenty years, it still intrinsically holds value. There's precious metals in it that we're still interested in. And, you know, as the leading manufacturer of electric vehicles and other battery-containing products, it's in our interest that we want to be capturing those materials throughout time. I would say that for all of North America, our Gigafactory in Sparks, Nevada, which is on track to being one of the, if not the biggest building in the world, that is where, that's where we manufacture all of our batteries. And that's where we actually have a long-term agreement to manufacture batteries there for a long time. The factory in, we, we just opened a factory, and often that's to develop our trucks and specific vehicles there. But Tesla doesn't have any plan to move our North American battery headquarters away from Sparks.
Okay. Um.
And just to answer your question, to ship it from your location to our Gigafactory, it's about five thousand dollars in today's dollars. So again, it's, you know, pays five thousand dollars at the end of life, but every year you're going to be saving about ninety thousand plus dollars.
Okay, thank you. The next question isn't for you, but it, I think it's probably for Mr. Uribe. Under the budget impact, it tells us how much all of this is going to count cost out of each of the various funds. It doesn't actually say that much is in these various funds, and I just want to get in the record that that much is in the funds.
I believe, looking at the suggested actions, there is a request for some additional appropriation for some of the funds.
Okay, so that would come from the general fund?
Some from the police facility fund, library facility fund, and the CSD capital projects fund balances.
Right. And so the money needs to come from there. It doesn't ever say in here that we have that much money in those various funds. All I'm saying.
Right, we.
Is there to remove from, right?
They have to, the request is to authorize additional appropriations in each of those funds.
From?
Oh, from those fund balances, in those funds.
Okay.
Mayor Craven, could I add on to that, in that, in that budget impact statement on Big Stamp Page Five?
Okay.
It's a big, it's a big paragraph with lots of fund names and dollar amounts.
Right.
So basically, that's summarizing the fact that there is some budget available.
Right.
And appropriation is going to be required. And then towards the bottom of that one first paragraph under budget impact where it says, additional appropriation of three hundred eighty-five thousand and twenty dollars made up of seventy-four thousand four seventy-five from available City Hall fund balance, and then dollar amounts from available police facility.
Okay.
That, that's where it's stating that there's verification that there are available funds that are being drawn from.
Okay, and I had missed those words. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Um. I have some more questions, let's see. Oh, yes, Mr. Glanville, or Ms., yeah. Somebody said that other agencies are currently using this, this process with the Tesla batteries. What other agencies? Can you just give me a couple? I mean, that should be public information.
So we do have a privacy policy. You are right that, you know, then once something is out there in the public, is, you know, it's kind of public record.
Well, if they're public, are, are they, are they public agencies or private facilities?
Both. So just for the background, this program, S chip equity resiliency, opened in May. Tesla, we are the leading developer for it. We've contracted over one hundred sixty projects, and over a hundred and twenty-five of those are with public entities. They're with cities, counties, water, water districts, special districts, tribes. Let me see if I can just pull up a quick list of Ventura.
I mean, if they're public agencies, it isn't private information, because
Correct, correct.
Any contract that's approved is public.
Correct. So Ventura. Correct. So Ventura River Water District, Humboldt Municipal Bay Water District. I do have a more complete list that I could pull up. City of Cloverdale.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Would you find it useful to ask Mr. Glanville if he has any examples of specific publicly owned treatment works or wastewater agencies, wastewater facilities that, that has that, that have that battery?
Yes, I think that's, that's what I was meaning, but.
Ojai Valley Sanitation District, Palmdale Water District. I know San Luis Obispo County. They're under contract with us. In addition to the City of San Luis Obispo as well. And I know one customer of mine is El Dorado Irrigation District, City of Santa Cruz. It's, it's a long list, to be honest, with over 125 projects.
And are these in operation or just under contract?
The ones that I've been mentioning are ones that we have contracted as part of this project. Tesla, you know, I, I could get you a list of, and these are the public agencies that I'm personally working with. That being the case, Tesla has been developing these projects, and projects, and deploying these projects at water agencies for some time now. So I could pull up a list of existing systems if you'd be interested in that. It might take me a little bit of time.
Okay.
I do know that Ventura River, there, the battery has been installed, and we're about to get permission to operate from the utility to turn it on. So you know, this is a relatively new state program. But, you know, rest assured that we have, we have over 86,000 battery energy storage systems deployed around the world.
Okay, I guess where I was going is, and I think I didn't make my question clear. Do you know of any treatment plant, publicly owned treatment plant, sewage treatment plant, whatever you want to call it, that has been operating with this system for a while?
I could definitely get that off the top of my head. I just know of these ones that me and my team right now that we've contracted. That being said, there are industrial batteries installed out there, kind of before my time. I'd be happy to get you a list of those.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I, are there any other questions from any of the council members? Mr. Malchay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Glanville, is your guys' Tesla's grid services program up and running yet, or is that a future program you guys are going to roll out?
It is running at this point, yes.
Cool. And then when it comes to the life, the expected life of the battery, you guys warranty, you'll be maintaining it for 10 years. You had mentioned that you warranty it for actually 15 years. Is that correct? Did I hear that right?
Correct. There's a manufacturer's warranty for 15 years. But up over and above and beyond that, the state requires that we add a operation and maintenance agreement. It's a little bit more proactive rather than reactive.
Okay. And then what, what do you guys deem to be the end, aside from simply non-operational or, you know, inoperable? What is, what is Tesla's deemed? At what point does it, is it deemed to be at the end of its useful life? Is that when it reaches only a certain, it's only able to hold a certain percentage charge?
Good question. So after 15 years, we warranty the battery will have at least 70% of its original capacity. Just kind of like battery in your phone. It degrades slightly over time. But really, it's, it's up to you. It's, as long as you still see value in it, you will own that asset, so you can, you know, at any point that you want to decommission it and either return it to us or sell it to a third party, or you could even pay a third-party electrician to come out and service it. It, it's really your call. The battery will still continue to peak shape and load shift and provide emergency backup. It, you know, just will gradually be less over time.
And this, this whole agreement is predicated on the ability for the money, money to be able to be allocated through the S-Gip program, through the CPUC, right?
Correct. The way it works is that after the agreement signature, we submit the application to the state, to the, to the program administrators for S-Gip, in this case, Southern California Edison actually does it themselves. So that's actually, once we submit the application, we have to wait to hear back from them. It can take two months, it can take six months. That's pretty much the longest amount of time in the process. We estimate, you know, kind of everything lines up right with permitting and which, which we handle. If everything lines up, then we'd be able to deploy the system, actually get it installed probably Q4 of this year, and then we get permission to operate from the utility in Q1 of next year.
All right. Those were the questions I had. Thank you.
Mr. Kildy, did you have another question?
Yeah. Long as Ryan's here. And I know there's speculative, but it's not if, but it's when this battery is going to have to be reconditioned. And the cost, I mean, we really don't know, but somewhere in today's dollars to $5,000. Is there any special handling charges with this? In other words, is there a specialized hauler that we're going to have to hire to send this up to Sparks, Nevada?
Yeah, that's a great question. The unit itself is called Megapack. It's entirely contained. You would, you know, any qualified hauler, as you call it, would be able to ship and return it to us. You could always work closely with us. But, you know, at today's dollars, what we're saying is, based on our calculations, it would be about $5,000 to return the unit to our Giga Factory.
So there's not really any special handling or whatnot that would be out of the, the realm of a qualified hauler that would be able to, to perform this operation?
Sorry, going to get off mute there. Well, you know, Tesla, we do manufacture a semi truck, so if you want, you could go with our semi truck. But no, it could be any standard truck.
Thank you. That's all.
Ms. Santangelo.
So Ryan, can you tell me, I mean, I understand it's a zero-dollar agreement. What, what is the cost, though, of this in today's dollar, the battery installation?
So what, what Tesla's costs are?
Well, what, if there was no agreement and there was not the grant program, what would it cost?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the battery alone for this project, the battery hardware is about $2.2 million. The, you know, all in, including, you know, installation and commissioning, handling, permitting, everything. If this is out of pocket, it would be closer to $3 million all in for the project. That being said, you know, Tesla, we're happy. We, we handle all the payments. We pay for everything upfront, and then the state reimburses us over a five-year period. And, you know, after year five, we actually make a profit on the project. So it's, that's, that's kind of what's in it for Tesla, is we upfront the money now, and then we receive the rebates over a five-year period.
I know you don't have a crystal ball, but do you think there would be similar grant programs for replacing batteries into the future?
So to be honest, this is the most lucrative incentive we've ever seen for batteries, and California is the most progressive state when it comes to alternative energy programs, and specifically the S-Gip or self-generation incentive program. We've never seen anything like this in our careers where the entire cost of the battery, the hardware, 10 years of maintenance, you know, operation and service, you know, full turnkey, you own the asset from day one. We haven't seen that be entirely paid for by the state. And, you know, yeah, we don't have a crystal ball that I, I can't imagine every, anything ever this good really coming around again, to be honest.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Your Honor, I have one follow-up. I'm just kind of.
Mr. Kildy, and we, we have other parts of this. We've spent a lot of time on the Tesla program.
Really, really quickly, I just want to make sure that I understand this. If in fact we do have a failure, does the diesel generator kick on right away, or do we pull the power from the grid?
So let's unpack that. In, in this scenario, let's say you're, you're being powered by the grid, and i- is this a situation where the grid goes down, and then you're being backed up by the batteries?
Yes.
Okay, so the grid goes down, you're being backed up by the batteries, something goes wrong, then you would revert to whatever your solution is right now. So you, I don't know, maybe Andrew can speak to this. I don't know if you already have an automatic transfer switch that kicks the generators on. But the battery is installed upstream from the generator, so the generator wouldn't see the outage until the battery would be fully depleted, or if something were to go wrong with it. And then you just go back to whatever solution you have right now.
Thank you.
Just in conclusion, the, the spirit of this program is to increase resilience, Equity Resiliency Program. And so, you know, if, if this were to not add to the resiliency of your facility, it would, you know, the state wouldn't allow us, wouldn't let us do it. We're one of the few vendors that's approved by the state, and, you know, we have this unique offering. So it will, rest assured, it will only increase your resiliency.
Okay, are there any other questions on the Tesla program or any of these, either of the other things that we're going to be voting on here? Okay, does anybody have any, before we entertain a motion or motions, there are a lot of motions here. Does anybody have any comments? I, I have a comment. This has in what seems like a short time gone from a little bit over $100,000 to, when we're talking about all of this, to well over half a million. And this doesn't get us to final design. And I do have to say, I didn't realize this was going to be increasing so quickly for all of this. And I guess personally, I still have in my mind how every few months or every year for years, the cost of the desalter kept going up and up and up until we got to well over $50, $60 million after $50 million, who's counting, when we thought it was going to be about 30. And so I'm beginning to get apprehensive about this. So when this comes back to us in a hole, later this year, I think they said, for the decision to either award a contract for final design for the other things, or to not. I'm going to be looking at this and looking at a estimated total for the whole thing, including construction, because I think we have to keep in mind for what the cost of going green is. And we have started out talking about a couple of simple generators, and this all of a sudden bloomed to something else. And, and so I, I just want everybody to be aware that when this comes back, I'm going to be looking at costs very carefully. So those are my, my comments. Does anybody else have any comments?
Your Honor, I'll make a, I'll make a comment. Yes, I agree with that. Remember, it's highly subsidized by the state for the battery, and that's really a wider stand, no charge for the battery for. And I'm talking about the wastewater treatment here too. But yes, we do have to keep an eye on the costs on this, and I will also be following it very closely in the future.
And I'm not talking about just the wastewater treatment plant, which is what we mainly talked about here tonight. I'm talking about all of it, but Mr. Malchay also had a comment.
I'll be, I'll be really quick. I think this is, I, I think we're, we're headed in the right direction. I don't, I don't disagree with the comments that have been made. I mean, at the end of the day, we are stewards of taxpayer dollars. This project has to pencil out. That is certainly really important. From everything we've been shown thus far, it looks like it has a very good likelihood of pensling out. And this isn't, I don't just see this as an investment in, I mean, it's not just an investment, a financial investment in cleaner energy. But I, I think it'll, I think it'll work its way out to be a good investment for the city as well, that we will, we will see significant savings for taxpayers, albeit it'll probably be over the course of 20 years, but dollar saved, the dollar saved. I'm very hopeful that, that we will see that. I am certainly, I have no expectations that this is going to get drawn out over 15-plus years, like the desalter project. If it does, and something went horribly wrong. But I, I think, I think this will move significantly more swiftly. And I'm really hopeful, actually, you know, when it comes to this kind of technology, the price has only been going down. And I'm hopeful that when it comes to even a year or two down the road, that the cost of solar panels and the cost of battery technology continues to decrease as there's wider and broader adoption. So, yeah, thank you.
Ms. Santangelo.
Yeah, I, I too am always concerned about the cost of, of projects like this, but I agree with Mr. Malchay that I think in the long run that this is not only the benefits in, in greener energy, but as an investment. And, you know, I think as time goes on, we're going to find changes like these thrust upon us. It's what's going to happen. And so I, I would rather be doing it now when we have these opportunities with the grants, and I'd rather be doing it now and be ahead of the game and take advantage of, of the funding that's out there. So.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Tremblay.
I'm ready to go ahead with a motion, if I might.
Certainly.
I would move that the council approve suggested, and this would be a joint action with the sanitary district, a board of directors, suggested actions one, two, and four in our staff report. And we'll deal with item three separately, because I understand that's a city council item only.
Second, although it's on the CAM Sand agenda as a voting item, if you look at the agenda.
No, well, then I'll just inquire of you or Mr. Pirik, however you want to do this.
I think Mr. Pirik, because I, I had understood we had to do different, we could do CAM Sand and city motions, but we needed one, then two, and then four. So let's ask the attorney.
I appreciate your faith. I guess it depends on to what extent these individual items are joint versus separate. And this may be a question I would ask to Dave Klotzel. We heard from Councilmember Tremblay a motion to have the joint approval of one, two, and four. And my question to you, Mr. Klotzel, would be, are those in fact joint items? And my question to you, Mr. Clotzel, would be, are those, in fact, joint items for both the city and Cam Sand?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And then my next question, don't go away. Uh, my next question is on number three. Is that um a item solely limited to the city?
Yes, it is. It's pertaining to the final design of the backup generators at City Hall and Corporation Yard, which are not C S D related.
All right, well, that makes my answer easy. So the um motion would be in order um for one, two, and four as being a joint um action by the council and the C S D. And then I'm uh understanding there may be a separate motion coming uh by uh on the part of the council for number three.
There is a motion to adopt recommended actions, one, two, and four for both Camrio Sanitary District and Camrio City. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Santangelo. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kildy?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Molche?
Yes.
Mayor Craven?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Tremblay.
Now, since I'm on a roll, if I can go ahead and make a motion with regard to the city council only, um, move to, I'll move to that the council approve suggested action number three in our staff report.
I'll second that.
There's a motion by Mr. Tremblay, a second by Mr. Molche. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kildy?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Molche?
Yes.
Mayor Craven?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I think it would be appropriate now for me to go ahead and adjourn the Camrio Sanitary District Board meeting.
Okay.
So that will, let let through and reflect that, please.
And we, the city council, will move on to item B under uh Public Works, MetroLink Underclassing, S T fourteen dash oh five Professional Services Agreements. Do we have the staff report, please?
Your honor?
Yes.
I, my understanding, did we not move the consent item C? I had a question on that. We were going to do that.
That's coming up after B. I said we were going to make it as item C.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor and Council. Principal Engineer Ken Matsuo will be giving this presentation. Um, another um major project that's keeping Public Works C I P very busy.
Evening, Mayor Council. Let me get the slides started here. All right, I think everyone can see that. All right, the MetroLink Undercrossing Preliminary Design Services. Okay. Uh, this uh slide shows the approximate location of the project. Uh, the dark yellow box is about where we think the tunnel will go for the undercrossing. Now, we'll zoom in on the next slide. The project is to install a pedestrian tunnel at the Camrio Metrolink Station. Now, you can see the yellow box, which represents the tunnel, and the ramps and stairs are in purple and red. This layout is schematic and just a representation of what the undercrossing would look like. We'll need to work through the design to determine the actual dimensions and the locations. But what's shown here is roughly what it would look like. The total cost of the project is estimated to be about twelve million dollars with a uh six point eight nine million dollar grant from LoSan and uh the city funds consisting of Camrio Corridor and T M F covering the balance. Yeah, five point one million. Now, keep in mind, this is an estimate before our design really begins, so the cost estimate will be refined as we move forward. We've gone through a R F Q process, just like the firms. Rail Pros is the design firm, and and all the group will assist with project management services. The current effort will be to go through a preliminary design phase that will help scope the remainder of the design for the project. This preliminary engineering phase is anticipated costs about four hundred thousand dollars. We'll uh return to council late in summer to award the final design phase, which we anticipate will cost approximately one point six million dollars, as you can see there. The uh breakdown of the feature phases, including permitting of three hundred thousand and construction of approximately nine point four million or estimated amounts at this point. The project timeline is shown here and with the uh estimated dates to complete. Uh, we'll work out the uh exact timeline as we uh work through the final design. But we anticipate uh construction by approximately the end of twenty twenty five. The railroad is uh somewhat uh challenging to work with, so we hope to be able to uh get everything done by that time. All suggested actions, uh, like to have have a authorization to appro- for appropriation in the Camrio Corridor account. Uh, project S T fourteen oh five in the amount of ninety three, two, one, two, from the um Camrio Corridor available fund balance. Uh, also, hire Rail Pros for preliminary engineering and and alter group for project management for phase one preliminary design of the MetroLink Undercrossing Project. Next step, uh, staff will return to council to issue agreements for final design and project management in late summer twenty twenty one. That's after we complete the uh preliminary design. You have any questions? I'm available for answering.
Questions? Mr. Mol.
Thank you, Ken. Um, quick questions. Uh, I know we we probably won't know for certain until at least the preliminary design is done. But do we anticipate right now that that this is going to impact into the existing parking stalls on either side of the tracks? Charlotte's shaking her head with.
Let me see if I can get to this uh slide here. The, this is what we anticipate at this point, what it would look like. We don't want to impact the parking lots as much as possible, but we won't know the the real impacts until we uh get further into design. But this is what what we're looking at right now. We're hoping to avoid impacts. But until we get further into design, we are unable to get the exact dimensions of where everything is. And uh, we're hoping to stay out of the parking stalls as much as possible.
I I walked the spot, and I looked at Google Earth as well. I I'm not as hopeful that we're not, we're going to be able to not impact parking spots. But in the event that we do, um, is that going to require us to somehow add additional parking spots? Are we, are we required to have a certain number of parking spots or anything of that nature?
I don't believe that we're required to um have a certain number of parking spots here. But um, what we have right now is a situation where uh one side of the uh parking lots, there's a, I guess there's a east and west side of the uh MetroLink Station. So um, one side that's closer to Mission, uh, Mission Oaks is uh less utilized. So having this uh more convenient uh um tunnel would make it easier to use both the lots. Uh, so one lot right now is very packed, and the other one, there's not so many cars. But by having this, we're hoping that we'll balance out a little better.
Okay, I I agree with you. The the east side is is severely underutilized every time I drive, drive past it. When, is it, is it, is it safe to assume that when you say that we're going to continue to refine the cost of this as we get closer to final design, that that these, this, we should anticipate this cost to go up? Uh, how did we arrive at twelve million dollars and what, and how how conservative of a number is that?
Well, we estimated this based on other uh stations that were were uh instructed. And we uh asked our consultant who uh did the preliminary design. And we uh asked during the um R F Q process of our consultants who were uh proposing on this project, what what sort of uh cost we would anticipate for this. And uh, this twelve million dollars is in the ballpark. Uh, it could be high, it could be low, but we won't know the answer to that until we get further into design. Uh, what we're anticipating, and one of the things that impacts the cost would be how the aesthetics are for this. We're, we're not thinking of a uh really uh intricate design for this. This is more basic. It, we anticipate it would look good, but not be a huge um intricate uh aesthetic design um for this. So that would impact the cost, but we want it to look good, but still uh be more functional, more than uh than, I guess, have huge aesthetic elements. So uh, if we, if we stick with that theme, uh, we can try to control the cost as best as possible.
Okay, uh, and one final question, Madam Mayor. Um, Ken, you already alluded to this. And uh, I so the, the three-year gap between preliminary, or yeah, three-year gap between preliminary design being completed and final design and permitting, that's largely has to do with the fact that we have to work with the railroad and other agencies?
That is correct. The railroad is a, is a challenging uh agency to work with. So we anticipate that there's going to be a uh um approximate three-year design period. Uh, the firm that we uh are proposing to hire, uh, their name is Rail Pros. So that's kind of their, their line of work is rail. And uh, we asked them about how long they anticipate. They felt it was in that range there, hopefully a little sooner than three years. But they felt that that was, that was a ballpark.
And sorry, one, one last question. Um, I know that we've identified funding sources for the anticipated or estimated project cost of twelve million. In the event it goes up, we would have to obviously find additional funds to fit that bill. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, because we'd be more or less exhausting, I, I think my memory serves right, we'd more or less be exhausting those two city funds.
That's probably correct. The uh T M F and the uh um corridor funds would be exhausted, and we'd need to look for other funds.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Tremblay.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, if I can, Ken, let me just sort of ask you some questions to sort of paint the the context here. As I understand it, from both sitting on V C T C and and MetroLink, what this project is really intended to focus on is the improvement of the service levels on the Amtrak Surfliner, correct?
Well, it would be the MetroLink also.
Well, no, but the the funds that are coming for this project were funds that came, were six point eight nine million dollars through LoSan, through the Los Angeles, San Diego, San Luis Obispo Rail Corridor for construction, right? Weren't those, isn't that correct?
That is correct.
And isn't it also correct that these are, these are S B one funds?
Yeah, that's correct.
Came down uh for for that. And those are the funds that are the the transit and inner-city rail capital program, right?
That's correct.
I guess if I go to acronyms, I'm going to call it the T I R C P or T R C P program of the of of S B one. Um, but I, it's fair to say, isn't it, though, that this is, and I'm going to actually, ultimately, Mr. Molche, get to the heart of your final question, I think. Um, but give me, give me a minute if I can, just to paint the picture. Uh, I mean, th- this was LoSan funding for this, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And I'm, am I also understanding that that this is the first project uh to improve, to improve service for Amtrak uh Surfliner, but by extension, that was an actual, but by extension, it also improves service potential for MetroLink, right?
That's correct. It will, it will do both.
Well, the bottom line is, if if this project were to move forward in the future, more Surfliner trains would be able to stop at our, at Camrio Station, right? Because then you'd have both the east and the west platforms serviced.
Yes, the the Amtrak would be able to use both, as well as the MetroLink would be able to use both.
Right, but but what, the way that this is viewed, I I think at V C T C is, is that this is the first major investment in a series, this, this specific project is the first major investment in a whole series of projects toward trying to improve um eventual bi-directional service north of Moore Park through Camrio, Oxnard, Ventura. Is is that a fair way to to put it?
Yes, this, this, as well as a number of other projects on the rail corridor, uh, would uh improve service. Uh, there's a double tracking that's planned also uh with V C T C. Um, the um trains right now have a uh difficult time passing each other. So uh, they have to wait far away uh and not uh be in the uh Camrio area. Uh, so it causes delay in the trains uh right now with the double tracking effort that's going to happen with V C T C. That's uh hopefully going to uh reduce some amounts of delays. And uh, this um currently have double tracks at the station, as you can see here. Uh, being able to use either uh platform would also help with uh reducing delays.
Right, but if you were to extend that map, wouldn't, uh, to the, to the, uh, I'd say to the west or south, southwest, the double tracks end shortly after they come out of our Camrio Station, correct?
Correct, correct.
Right, and so um, it, it, one of the limitations, as I understand it, and and that also limits uh MetroLink, uh, that it only has three time slots in the morning and three time slots in the afternoon, uh, because that's what Union Pacific says MetroLink can do. Is that?
That's, that's.
That consistent with your understanding?
That's my understanding too, that there's a limitation on the number of slots.
Right, so what this may ultimately do as well uh is uh, you know, hoping to be able to add some more trains uh uh midday uh north of Moore Park. You know, in other words, Camrio, Oxnard, Ventura, as opposed to peak A M and peak, peak P M. But be able to hopefully ultimately get to the point where they can add more midday, midday trains.
Yeah, it's, it's to add more train service uh and increase the uh frequency of the trains that we can have heading towards uh um, I guess, both directions.
Right, so now, finally, again, and thank you to Mr. Molche for his patience, finally getting to Mr. Molche's last question. What, what happened is, is this, this money, the six point eight nine million that was granted through S B one and the and the T R C P program, uh, that came through uh LoSan, and the city was required per our staff report to match that for uh at least nine hundred and ten thousand dollars, right?
Yes, that's correct.
But if, would there be anything, I mean, if the costs are substantially over, and it looks like, you know, we, there's a fair argument that the costs are substantially over what was anticipated, um, there would be nothing preventing the city of Camrio from going back to the state and asking for further grant funding in order to make this project happen. Would there?
I don't know that there is additional funds available, but uh we can certainly make the request.
Well, these are S B one funds that are being continually generated and put into the T I R C P program, right?
Yeah, it's a S B one, but we we would, I don't know the answer to that question as far as if we can uh get more, but we can certainly look into that.
Well, maybe that's something that's that staff can look into, but my belief is that if the costs are substantially over, or we as a council think that's substantial ever, w- we can go back to LoSan and ask LoSan, since this is a project that was funded through uh uh LoSan grant funds, uh, go back and and ask for some further construction funding, either in the, either in the construction or for design. Uh, and perhaps staff could, could, could look at that. I mean, recognizing that right now, this is only phase one of the preliminary engineering design services. And sort of on the theory that you got to crawl before you can walk, we're just taking a s- a s- a small incremental uh step with this action, right?
Yes, but my understanding is that the funding was for um construction only uh from, from this grant. So uh, we might be able to. So we might be able to ask for additional funds for construction. But the way that VCTC explained the funding, the design was to be funded by the city.
Well, my, my understanding is actually a little different than that, I guess. So maybe I can maybe ask staff to, to, to look at that some more. But I think we, we could, the city could go back and say, you know, we, we, this, this project is costing a lot more than what we had originally anticipated. And we need some, we want to apply for some additional funds or ask for some additional funds through LoSan to the state for both the construction and or, and or design costs. At least that, that would be my request. The, the interesting thing about this contextually, Ken, i- isn't it that, I mean, that the, these funds that came out, this six point eight nine million through LoSan, my understanding is these were in the very first slug of TIRCP monies, SB one monies that came forward, which to me says this is an important project. This was recognized by the state as an important project for, you know, for the, the reasons I, I, I gave a few minutes ago, including but not limited to the importance of, of the Surfliner service on the northern portion of the, the Surfliner corridor, which happens to be a benefit to Metrolink. But that's what this was for. Would you agree that that sounds like the, an appropriate characterization?
Yes, it's, 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 this is viewed as a important corridor. The area, including the variety of project that I was describing, the double tracking as well as this. The totality of those projects was viewed as something that would improve service from way beyond Camrio. The trains have to wait, I think in Santa Barbara right now. So that, that's the distance we're talking about, far away.
Right. And that's one reason why this project was in the first slug of monies coming out through the SB one TIRCP program. Because it recognized the importance of this project as a kind of a, I don't know what term I want to use, but basically it, it helps everything else.
Yeah, that's correct. That, that's a good characterization. It helps, it helps a whole bunch of areas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That concludes my, my questions.
Yeah, let me re- respond a little bit to your questioning. This grant was not a grant in its, in itself. This grant was tied into all those other things that Mr. Masuga was talking about. And when this came to us the time before and the time before that, I kept saying, this is a heck of a lot of money. I don't think we want to do this. It was not our tunnel or our allowing people to get from one side to the other that was deemed to be an important thing. It was the whole thing that the VCTC submitted, which was a huge amount, that this was a small part of. So I, I'm not sure that, that whoever in Sacramento said, yes, let's give VCTC this amount of money a whole, whole lot more than six point eight nine million. Uh, I, I don't think they said the Camrio project is the, the thing that's pulling it through. I think they said this whole thing, the double tracking and the whole works is what's important.
Madam Mayor, can I respond?
Sure.
Yeah. My understanding is that this was originally funded, these, these monies came through, and perhaps either Ken or Dave Clots or someone else could, could, could answer. These monies came through LoSan in recognition that, and it was in the first slug of, of TIRCP monies, in recognition of the importance of, of Surfliner service on the northern portion of the Surfliner corridor. And I, I apologize for being repetitive. I know I just said that a few minutes ago. But that was the impetus for this in the first place. It happened to be a benefit to Metrolink as well. But this is, if I'm understanding it correctly, maybe staff could come back and, you know, give us more information. But my understanding is this was, you know, a low, a grant that came through LoSan, the city contributed the match. And, you know, if, 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 if this is a situation truly where the costs are going to be way over what we thought it was going to be, and I guess we would know that after we, after we did the preliminary design and, and, you know, approved this item, then, then they would come back to us. Then I think we would be, it would certainly be legitimate for, for us to go back to LoSan and ask them to go back to the state and ask for further grant funding. Because in context, this, this is, this is, this project, as I understand it, is, I don't know if I want to call it a linchpin. That's probably not, it's probably an exaggeration, but it's, it's, it's very important in terms of, of ultimately trying to get to increased service in the northern part of Ventura County, in the Camrio, Oxnard, Ventura area, including ultimate potential for double tracking.
Well, just remember, Caltrans believes that we already have a way to get from one side to the other.
I, right. I understand.
They do. I mean, it's the laughing stock of the state, maybe farther on than the state, but they believe that. They built it twice. The first time they built it, it was, it, it had, it was completely wrong. It didn't end up in the right place. So they had to do it again.
Right. It's just that I, when I see the, the amount on the PowerPoint that it would require city funds at five point one million. I mean, obviously that causes me to sit up and go, wait a minute, we gotta, we, we have to think about that because it's, it's, it's that. If that's, if that's correct, then that represents substantially more than what originally was anticipated. And my point is that if that's the case, and we don't know, we wouldn't know until we have this preliminary engineering design work done and somebody can come back and give us a, a, a better estimate. If that's the case, then it seems to me that we then ought to have a conversation about going back to LoSan and saying, we need some more money.
Okay.
I would, I would agree that it doesn't hurt to ask. So we, we will talk with VCTC, see what, see what can be done. And we'll provide information back to council at that point.
Let me ask Mr. Masuga a different type of question, same question, but re, coming at it from a different angle. Did the city apply for this grant or did VCTC?
I believe it was a, well, it's kind of both. And we, we applied together. VCTC asked us to provide information about this project so that as, as a group, we could apply for funding. And this is truly a part of a, a, a bigger grant. I don't recall the dollar amount of the grant, but it's in excess of a hundred million dollars, the, the entire grant. So this is just a, a small piece of it. Through LoSan grant.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Kildee.
Yes, the suggestion action tonight, are all of these potential appropriations going to come out of the Camrio corridor account?
Uh, no. The funds would, see, I think at this point, let's see. For the suggested action, I believe it is a corridor at this point. Future will be TMF.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Tremblay.
Uh, Mr. Kildee, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just maybe ask Mr. Matsuda, i- isn't some of this funding coming out of traffic mitigation fee, TMF?
At, at a future date, it will. The current is, not TMF, it's corridor. There's sufficient funds to cover the, the initial small amount that we're moving forward. But when we do the final design, that will come from the TMF.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Kildee.
Mr. Kildee, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. Maybe somebody can shed a little light. So the ninety-three thousand and the three hundred and two and the forty-five roughly comes out of Camrio corridor account. Am I, is that correct?
See. I believe that's all coming from Camrio corridor account.
Thank you. That's all.
Any other questions? I don't see any hands. I have several, but let's start with that Camrio corridor account. And I don't know who this question is for, but is that the one we previously called SIBA or the Springville interchange account?
Uh, yes, this is Mark your EBSI director. That is correct. Those are primarily SIBA funds that are being run through the Camrio corridor account.
And how far is the Camrio corridor go? I'm trying to get in my head a, a relationship between Springville interchange and it's paying for this design for the, going under the railroad.
I could shed a little light on that if you will.
Sure.
The, it basically is the redevelopment agency area. All, all locations that qualify for redevelopment agency funds back when that existed create the area that Camrio corridor funds or then, and the use of the SIBA collected monies can be utilized for. So if you roughly imagine a strip of land, you know, goes on either side of the 101 from Pat west of Springville all the way, I think a little bit east of Mission, of Dawson and, and the Metrolink area. So there's a, that existing map is what applies. We, we've used the funds for some overlay projects that are within that corridor and say for daily drive in Paseo, Camrio. So that's the area.
But this would deplete those funds?
No, not totally. It's utilizing a portion of them. Those, those, those funds have been programmed over several other capital improvement projects as well.
Okay. I guess I misread. Um, and it says that at a later date, the traffic mitigation fee list would be brought to us to be amended. When, when do we anticipate that?
Correct. Before the end of this fiscal year. We've been, and if you recall, we've had a, several items to counsel to award and then amend a contract with a consultant that is updating our traffic model and the traffic mitigation fee nexus study. Essentially what we are doing is we need to update the inventory of projects to be funded by traffic mitigation. The existing list of projects needs to be updated. Quite a few of those projects have been constructed. A, a couple of them have been looked into further and have been deemed not necessary. And then we have several of the, that have been added to the list, including this Metrolink undercrossing project, which qualifies for traffic mitigation funds. So we are reaching the completion of that nexus study. Uh, we're going through a final, final review and preparing it for Transportation Infrastructure Group Committee would see that next. And then with a recommendation to move that on to city council for full approval of the updated TMF project inventory and fee structure.
Thank you. Okay. I didn't see any hands for more questions, so I'm going to ask for comments. Does anybody have any comments on this? I, I have a few, and I think if you've been around a while, you know, I've never been a proponent of this project. The last time it came to us, I did ask if I could go look at one of these at someplace where it's already been construction, constructed. So VCTC told me the best one to look at that would probably be like this would be Rancho Cucamonga. So my husband and I drove out to Rancho Cucamonga. And I got to tell you, I stood in the parking lot with my mouth open, looking at this structure. It certainly wasn't anything like I had envisioned. I had envisioned a nice little ramp going down, a tunnel under and a ramp coming up. And it wasn't anything like that. It took up a lot more space than I could ever have dreamed. It would have been engineered to, to take up. It did look nice, I'll say that. And I don't know that we have to have fancy doors on it. But for safety reasons, they didn't, they, they closed the doors off at night. I'm assuming these purple things over the ramp are maybe where light will come in. And there will be, my, one of my concerns at that time was that it was going to be dark and it would create a safety problem. Between the rail tracks, between the rails, there, there are grids to allow light to come in. So it turned out that, that wasn't one of my, I, I didn't need to be concerned about the lighting because natural light comes in as long as it's daylight. And in Rancho Cucamonga at that time at least, which was probably two, three years ago, in the evenings after all the trains had gone through and that were going to stop, they, they closed the gates, but it, it's quite a thing. And if it's like the one in Rancho Cucamonga, it probably will take up some parking spaces. But just to make sure you understand, this is not our parking lot. We do not own this parking lot. VCTC owns this parking lot. The city has an agreement with VCTC. We don't charge them anything. We maintain it for free. If we want landscaping put in, we put it in and we pay for it. We pay for its maintenance. We do all that. But it's their parking lot. Both of them are their parking lots. And so they got a, a grant that will cover a lot of it. And we're expected, even though it's not our parking lot, to pay for what looks like almost half. My guess is in the end, it's going to be more than half of the cost of this. And, and that's part of my problem with this whole thing. Yes, that's, that's my, those are my comments, but I, I just have had a problem with the way it's funded. I don't particularly have a problem with VCTC wanting it or the reasons they want it. I have a problem using Camrio money to pay for it. So having said that, are there any other, Mr. Kildee?
Yeah, Craven? I can't recall if we asked if the public had any comment.
I'm sorry. I don't believe we did, but let me have Mr. Kildee ask his question or whatever, and then we'll go to public.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Um, yeah, I just, I, I've had a, this project has been a real challenge to me too. How is explained tonight though, that we do have the east side of this very underutilized? And the fact that in my opinion, for us to get more train traffic, we've got to improve the system. The system definitely needs to be improved. I do have a lot of concerns about the city funds, some five million dollars that we don't even know exactly what that's going to be until you go out to bid here. But I'm willing to go this far tonight to, you know, approve the design. But I'm not willing to totally commit to this and, and, and definitely without some more monies coming in from LoSan or any other, you know, grant that we can find, which it probably isn't any, any out there. And I'm just hoping that if in fact this works, that it's going to work like it's intended. So I do have some concerns, but I'm willing to at least consider going forward this at this particular point. But I want to withhold my complete judgment until a future day.
Okay. I don't see any hands up. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to us on this item? Seeing no hands go up, we can continue the discussion or I'll accept a motion. Mr. Tremblay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a comment and then perhaps a motion if I can.
Certainly.
I, I, I think, I, I'm concerned about the, the cost as well, but I think contextually what I understand is that this is a, a preliminary step. I'd like to see us move the ball forward and then make a decision when the preliminary design engineering services are done. And it may well be at that point that we believe
are done. And it may well be at that point that we believe based on some of the arguments that you've made, that this is, this is requiring too much money to be kicked in by the city of Camrio. And then we would then make a decision to return to LoSan and the state through VCTC to say, we need some additional infusion of funds in order to make this project a reality. So with that comment, I'd like to make a motion to approve the suggested action in the staff report.
I'll second.
Mr. Kildy seconded, Mr. Tremblay made the first. And I would just add, I don't know that it has to just be LoSan funds. There might be some other type of federal funds available in the future. The, the next, now that the COVID item is over, the federal government is looking at infrastructure of all types and they may have some rail money in there. And so we could look at all kinds of different grants.
Agreed.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kildy?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moshe?
Yes.
Mayor Craven?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously. Mayor Craven? Unmuted.
And I went to all the trouble to push the button when I hadn't been muted. Now we will go to item C under Public Works, which was previously item H under the consent calendar, Camrio Hills Drain Replacement at Ventura Boulevard, SD 5052. Mr. Kildy, did you want a staff report or do you just have some questions?
Yeah, I just have a question for Mr. Klotzel. If he could go through about the expenditures, it's quite a lot of money for a design here. So I was wondering if he could go through the expenditures to a certain extent, if you would.
Sure. Yeah, I can give a brief description of what all is included here. If council recalls, not too long ago, we presented the alternatives for this project, which is required to replace this large concrete box drain under our two major roads, Ventura Boulevard and Los Poses. So just on the outset, it's a, this is a huge undertaking, a huge necessary undertaking. So a lot goes into it on the design side. I'm getting ready to put plans and specifications so we can go out to bid. So just a real quick summary on, on those items that will be, be completed here under this agreement that, that we're asking for authorization for. And again, the estimated cost of, of construction is about 12 and a half million for the construction side. So this cost here that we're looking at roughly about a million dollars for the, for the design effort will include full environmental review and approval. So there's a full environmental clearance process that needs to take place for this project, along with the permitting requirements that'll include Army Corps of Engineers, Fish and Wildlife, and Regional Water Quality Control Board. So anytime you touch a drainage structure, it requires those types of permits also. So there's a permitting element included in this effort. We do a full geotechnical review. Will include sampling and boring of the, of the, you know, the, the soils and all that goes into the information that is required to come up with a final design of what, what's required for the, for the thickness and the amount of rebar and steel in, in the, in the structure. And then along with a hydraulic design to verify that the size of box that we're putting in, while it's pretty well replacing what's there now, we do need to go through a, a complete design to make sure we're achieving the hydraulic capacity that's needed. Again, a full structural design. There is going to be some utility relocation work with this. Specifically at the downstream inward outlets now are, one of our force mains from our sewage lift station that's further down to the west, north of the airport, crosses, it's above ground at this point. And that's going to need to be relocated as a part of this effort. So there's some significant utility relocation efforts that'll go into the design, along with just the pure element of phasing of construction. And we touched on this in the prior presentations a bit about the, the need to phase the construction so we don't disrupt traffic as too much. We minimize as much as possible impacts to traffic, which there will be significant impacts. So there's extensive traffic control plans and construction phasing work that occurs with this engineering design effort. So hopefully that sheds a little light on the extensive amount of work that goes into this design effort and, and it's reflected in the total amount of fee that's required to accomplish that.
It does. I appreciate your clarification on that. And with that, I'll make a move that we approve item H on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion by Mr. Kildy, second by Ms. Santangelo. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kildy?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moshe?
Yes.
Mayor Craven?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously.
Okay, that gets us down to new business, oral communications, informational items which we can take no action on. Mr. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, I have no comments at this time.
City Attorney?
I have no items tonight.
Okay, let's start with Mr. Moshe.
Madam Mayor, do you want to, we're four minutes away from seven. Do you want to push this after the seven o'clock? Public comments?
Yes, yes, let's, I, I was off in La La Land, thinking it was 7:30. So let's take a short break. You get four minutes. It is seven o'clock. I will call the city council meeting back to order. Ask the record to reflect that all council members are present. This is the time for public comments. Any member of the public who has a comment on an item that is not on the agenda is welcome to speak to us at this time. I see no hands up. If there's any member of the public who would like to speak to us, please raise your hand. I see no hands raised. So we'll re, we will return to the previous item of, uh, council comments. And I will begin with Vice Mayor Moshe.
Thank you very much. Really quick meetings attended. March 4th, I attended a Association of Water Agencies meeting via Zoom. On March 9th, I attended the CC Channel Islands Foundation webinar on Zoom as well. I will let the council know tomorrow, I, myself and Ms. Angel will be attending the Airport Authority Meeting where we have on our agenda the, the hangar lease, which has been going on for quite, gosh, I think about seven years, if plus. So I know that'll be rather contentious. I just want to make everyone aware of that. And that was all meetings attended. The, my only real comment is COVID related. You know, we, he, we're, we're seeing lots of news of people lifting restrictions and things getting a little bit looser. I just want to remind everyone that COVID is still very much with us. It is still, still prevalent and it's still deadly and it's still taking many members of our own community. Ventura County is, I think, over 900 deaths. And I'm, I'm sadly very confident that we're going to exceed a thousand before this is all said and done. I do want to, I didn't want to call out one member of the community we recently lost, and that was Willem Van Holzen. Willem Hair Design, it's next to Eggs and Things. It's been there for, for as long as I can remember. He's the father of one of my really good friends I had in high school. And he just lost, I think, they took him off life support two days ago. Him and his wife, Vicki, had, had run Willem Hair Design. They sold it several years ago. But he, he just recently lost his battle with COVID after contracting it. So please, I just, I want to ask everyone, even though things seem to be loosening up, they seem to be heading in the right direction and getting better. It's still very serious. Please don't value ignorance over the value of human life, because that human life might be someone you care about and someone you love. So, thanks.
Ms. Antang?
Okay, meetings attended. February 26th was the Liaison Intergovernmental Committee. It's a lot of syllables. March 4th CPA Board. And March 5th, the Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness Committee. And on, back on February 25th, I met with CPA Special Committee on, we were discussing CPA staff wages. I I really appreciate Sean, what you said about COVID. You know, we still are in the purple tier. Things are getting better, but I, it, it feels like we're, it's like it's not here anymore and it really still is. When we first went on our first stay-at-home order last year, our numbers are worse than what they were back then. So I'm so happy to see so many people getting vaccinated and I please urge everybody who can, I'm so happy to see teachers being vaccinated. So, but we still need to do all of those other things, the basic stuff. Wash your hands, wear your mask, still avoid gathering. You know, there, the, the CDC guidelines came out for, for some new gathering guidelines between vaccinated people. But that, that doesn't mean it's back to normal. I wanted to make sure that, that two programs that the county is, is offering that our, our residents know about, there's the second COVID-19 Business Assistance Grant Program. And these are $5,000 grants available for businesses and nonprofits that did not receive money through the first round of grants last year. The pre-registration window is March 24th through March 30th. And then applications will begin March 31st and continue through April 6th. All of the updates, you can sign up to get the updates emailed to you.
You cut out on us.
What, what did you hear up to? Um, yeah, so they have a website set up with really valuable information on, it's got all the updates and it's got webinars, application instructions, information, all the forms that you need. And that website is vcbusinessgrants.com. There's also a program for rental assistance. And this is for both renters and landlords. And you can get information about this program at housingiskey.com. Housingiskey.com. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was that on March 8th, it was International Women's Day. That's a global day for celebrating the social, economic, and cult, cultural and political achievements of women. The day is also to mark a call to action for accelerating gender parity. Gender inequities still exist in four main areas of our life. Political empowerment, economic participation and opportunities, educational attainment, and health and survival. The COVID-19 pandemic has highlighted some of these inequities as how it has affected women more so than men. A lot of women have had to choose to stop working because their children couldn't go to school and had to stay home. I know some men did too, but mostly women are doing that. The theme this year for International Women's Day is Choose to Challenge. A challenged world is an alert world. Individuals, we're all responsible for our own thoughts and actions every day. Gender equity makes the world a better place for all of us, not just for women. We can all choose to challenge and call out gender bias and inequality. We can all choose to seek out and celebrate women's achievements. And collectively, we can all help create an inclusive world. So I hope that for the rest of this month and even beyond that, that we do these things, that we call out the inequalities that we see and that we act to change those. And that we really highlight the achievements of women. I, I talked about this last month when I talked about Black History Month. But it's important for our little girls to see women who are achieving and successful so that they know that they can do the same. And with that, that's all I have.
Mr. Kildy?
Okay, um, let's see, meetings attended, Liaison Intergovernment Committee meeting and a BRSD meeting. And just to comment about the Airport Authority Meeting tomorrow night, I've been a representative on the Airport Authority, kind of on and off, and you're absolutely right. This has been an ongoing situation here. But just do the best you can and, you know, listen intently and, you know, we'll see what happens. But you know, Godspeed. So I guess that's how I'll leave you with that one. So that's all I have tonight.
Mr. Trem?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Meetings attended, February 26th, a MetroLink board meeting, March 5th, a VCTC board meeting. Actually, a couple announcements on both, both fronts tonight. For MetroLink, on February 26th, the MetroLink Board of Directors held a, a public hearing and approved two fair policy changes that are pretty significant to the fair structure. Both of them started piloting back in August of last year. And you, you know, that's against the backdrop of having about a, somewhere around a 90%, 85% to 90% decline in ridership because of the pandemic for MetroLink. But the first is a, the MetroLink is now instituting a five-day Flex Pass, which riders can use for discounted all-day passes within a 30-day period. Because as people continue to work from home, the monthly pass is the monthly pass is less attractive. And they'd rather be able to choose those days that they, they, they want to go in. And that will be a more flexible option, certainly for those who are commuting in two to three days a week. The second significant change is the kids' ride-free-on-weekend policy. And that first, and that is now coming into play. Up to three children, 17 years and under, ride free of charge on weekends with each adult or a parent guardian using a valid ticket. And I really hope that people will, will take advantage of that. The second item I want to talk about is with respect to VCTC. I think we probably all saw, there was an article in the, this is really tough to do on Zoom, by the way. But in any event, rather than in chambers, but there was a article in the Ventura Star on Friday regarding the new freeway service patrol. You may have already seen the trucks on the freeway. The first segment, it goes from the, that's being serviced now, is from the Los Angeles County line through Cano Valley up to Camarillo Springs. And soon we'll see trucks on the Camarillo Springs to Central Segment. And it's also on the 118, they're also on the 118, but the services are Monday to Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. And from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. So you have peak morning and peak afternoon hours. And the priority is motorist safety and congestion relief. So you have roving trucks, tow trucks, which are going to assist disabled vehicles. And that runs the gamut from providing a gallon of gas to towing to a safe drop-off point. And so, for example, someone's stuck in the middle divider, the objective is to get that vehicle off the freeway, for example, to a park-and-ride immediately. And then they can call AAA to tow them to wherever they're going to tow them. So that's an important new program from, from, from VCTC. At the VCTC meeting last week, there was a presentation made by Kristin Deekus, who's the CEO of the Oxnard Harbor District. I'm trying to remember the last time that we had, I know it was pre-pandemic, the last time the Oxnard Harbor District runs the port, came in and just did a presentation on the importance of the port to the local economy. I think it was several years ago, you know, when I first got on the council, I want to say it's like 2017 or 2016 even. And I'm, because of the significant local economic impact that the Port District has, the Harbor District has on our local area, including tax revenues and direct jobs for Camarillo residents. I'm hopeful that someone else, in addition to me, might ask staff to consider, I guess, when we get back to, get back into chambers or even before then, have the, have the Harbor District make a short presentation to us on the import, on what's going on at the Harbor District. Because it certainly is important. And I see Mr. Moshe. Thank you, Sean.
I will add, I will add, they do give a presentation, I think, annually to the EDC.
Right.
So.
Maybe that's where I saw it before. Right. But I think it's, I think it's really important. And the presentation I heard the other day went about 15, 20 minutes, but I'm hopeful that staff can maybe call Kristin Deekus and see whether or not we might be able to get it on informational session. Two more things. First of all, I certainly agree with Sean and Susan regarding COVID-19 and continuing to take precautions. I can't articulate it any better than they have, so I'll just simply say ditto on that. And then finally, last week on Monday, there was a major traffic accident at Carmen and Los Poses. There were multiple cars involved, multiple injuries. There were multiple ambulances and fire and police all responded. I, if you recall, we, I brought this up at our October 28th meeting, which seems like a long time ago, doesn't it? And the, and the, about that specific intersection, when we were talking about it in reference to a potential for a change in signalization, whether that be for, you know, a protected green arrow the entire time or a flashing left turn arrow at, at the intersection. And I think, Sean, actually, you've brought up since then, you've talked about the, the yellow, what Thousand Oaks is doing in terms of the yellow signalization. What I would ask, what I would like to know from staff is what progress has been made since October 28th on beta testing, one of these changes in signalization? And have they identified this particular intersection, which just seems to be having some difficulties? Have they identified this particular intersection as a, as a perhaps hopefully potential beta testing site?
Good evening, Councilmember Trembley. If I could start by just kind of answering some, or providing you with some basic info on this intersection in particular, and then I'll, I'll pass it over to Dave Klotzel. After this accident, we did take a look at the intersection in terms of traffic collisions. This intersection is not within the top 10 intersections in Camarillo of traffic collisions. As a matter of fact, last year in 2020, we had three traffic collisions there. 2019, we had four, 2018, three. 2017 was a high year with nine, and 2016 was five. And when you add all those together, that does not get us in the top 10 of intersections. But it is an intersection that has been brought to our attention a number of times. We have conducted some extra enforcement out there, and perhaps that's the reason why the number of collisions remains so low out there. But as you know, we focus on the three Es when it comes to traffic-related issues. It's engineering, education, and enforcement, with enforcement kind of being the last part of, of what we do. And so I'll let Dave Klotzel talk to you about the, the engineering portion of that.
Yes, friend. Yeah, yeah, thanks, Commander. Appreciate that detailed info on the, on the history there. And our Traffic Engineering Division looks at those, those statistics also. We actually get copies of all the traffic collision reports and additional analysis or a look at, you know, the type of collision. Was it, was, did it involve a left turn or was it an unsafe lane change and vehicles going in the same direction? So we do take a look at that information in concert with coordinating and, you know, with, with the PD also when we do that. And as far as that one E on the engineering side, and I can't remember the exact date when council authorized, but we have moved into a, preparing a local road safety plan. We actually received a grant to prepare that. And that is a comprehensive citywide look at, you know, quite a few different things, including using the data from accident history at intersections and then also on, on main thoroughfares, other locations. But essentially looking at a comprehensive look at what, what is needed to be addressed and then, and then ways to implement improvements to local road, the local road safety. And obviously, traffic operations, it signals as one of those. So we are in the, oh, I'd say probably the first half of that effort on, on going through our local road safety plan. It does include a comprehensive involvement with stakeholder groups and reaching out to the community and getting input for, so it's a full data collection on, on, you know, areas and locations that need improvement with, with, for road safety, including signals. So this, you know, this will be a location, while as Commander said, is not at the top of the list of intersections, but it will be included in intersections that could be a candidate for. And a couple of the, you know, what we look at is some things that can be done specifically at, to improve safety at different locations. And at the intersections, both the yellow borders around signal heads that was mentioned, along with the flashing yellow arrow, will be, are, are elements of this local road safety plan that are being identified as possible. You know, things to implement that, that, that could achieve some additional improvement for road safety. The other item element could be looking at a protected left only, which would be, you would only proceed on a left turn on a green arrow and the rest of the time it would remain red. And that gets into a little bit more of the E of the traffic engineering on what ramifications does that have on backing up traffic that's waiting to turn left, that otherwise could proceed, when safe to do so? And that's the big key here is that quite, we've looked at the accident history on these locations with left turns. And the, the, the cause is typically unsafe and a failure to yield right of way and making an unsafe left turn, often when it's reported that they just couldn't see because there was another car waiting in the other direction. And really, it comes down to the drivers need to only proceed when it's safe to do so. Anyway, that being said, there are things that we need to look at is, is the left turn pocket long enough to stack enough cars there that may be waiting for that red arrow to turn green? So those are all items that are going to be addressed in this local road safety plan. And then with, we'll be coming back to council. The, the plan is, is actually to come to the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee first with that plan. And we'll probably possibly do that twice. We've got some initial information that we want to bring back. And then ultimately to the council with the outcome of that plan. And then implementation of, of these different things that are, you know, recommended and then warranted, we can move forward with at that time. But we'll be moving forward based on this comprehensive plan that we're working on right now.
Thank you, Mr. Klotzel. Madam Mayor, can I just ask one quick follow-up question?
Certainly.
What, when do you anticipate, Mr. Klotzel, going to committee and then to council?
Right. In, in the, in the near future, next month or two is, is when we anticipate. Don't have an exact date yet for, for going to committee. And then I would say toward, towards the latter part of this year, as soon, you know, sooner, sooner the better if we can. But, you know, before the end of the year, we anticipate coming back to council with that information.
Thank you very much. Thanks to both of you.
Okay, Mr. Trembley, I'm very happy to hear that the VCTC program with the tow trucks is underway. They've been talking about that for at least two years, I think three years maybe. And it certainly is a good way to relieve traffic congestion from just stalled cars or cars that, who knows, for whatever reason, are stopping on the inside shoulder, if there is one, or in a lane. And it really blocks things up. So I'm happy to hear about that. I also would like to say that Mr. Glanville earlier said that he would get us a list of publicly-owned treatment works. And I'm not asking for proprietary information, but in my opinion, if it's a public entity that's operating something, it should be public information to give us a list of the publicly-owned treatment works that are already in operation using their batteries. I'd really like to know how many are or if these 125 are just under contract, meaning they've signed them up but not operational yet. Um, that being said, I attended by Zoom RDP 21 meetings on the 25th, the 3rd, and the 4th. And I attended an Emergency Preparedness Committee meeting on the 5th. And I've talked about it for years and years, asking when it was going to happen. And I meant to mention this at the last council meeting, but I'm really delighted to see that that former, I think it was a Gulf Gas Station site at the corner of Los Poses and Ponderosa is all cleared. It's free of toxics and it's for sale. So I hope something good happens on that corner. And at least we don't have fences covered up with slit holes and a lot of machinery in there airing out the, aerating the, the ground. So I wanted to, I, I've kind of dissed that corner for years. It's been like that for what, 20 years or so? And so I'm happy to see that it's, it's finally been remediated. The last thing I have is that on Sunday, there was a very disturbing editorial piece in the Star regarding the Tolon Road landfill and how much it's been dipping into reserves. And since we have a stake in that, we have, ever since our trash moved from Baylor landfill to coastal landfill and then on up to Tolon Road, we've been dumping all of our trash there. And I would like to know exactly, I'd like to have staff ask the general manager of VRSD to come and give us a report and tell us what reserves they've been dipping into. And if that is the post-closure maintenance fund reserves or if they have had a $9 million worth of other reserves they've been using. And, and I don't want to get our rep into it because I think it's the general manager's responsibility to give us a report on the finances of the district and what he's been recommending. So I don't know if anybody else is interested in that, but Mr. Moshe would like to see it and Mr. Trembley as well. I do believe we need a report if those funds are completely used up and the funds are for the Baylor landfill, the coastal landfill. At one time, when I was on the VRSD Board for 18 years, and when we closed, the two years before we closed Baylor, we had to raise the tipping fee of $40 a ton. They're significantly less now, but we raised it so we could get that post-closure fund that's required by the state up to where it needed to be for post-closure maintenance. And that was only for a 25-year period. But the post-closure requirement goes on for the life, no matter what the law says. As we all know, for the life of the landfill and the landfill's been closed and it will always be there until somebody digs up the trash and finds a use for it. So I, I would really like a report from the general manager to explain to us what funds they've been dipping into and to, actually to respond to this editorial that was in Sunday's paper. And I will leave this for the city clerk. So if there are no other comments, this meeting is adjourned.